Probably not. Okay, the first item on the agenda is bylaw 6288-71C. Is that where we want to start? Bylaw amendment read 4403 and 4505, 24th Avenue South? So I need some... Okay, I need a resolution. This is for the drive-in slash entertainment venue. Who would like to sponsor this for second and third reading?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Campbell. Be resolved that bylaw 6288, land use amendment read 4403 and 4505, 24th Avenue South be given second reading. Counselor Campbell?
As we heard a couple hours ago, looking for an ability to have a drive-in theater slash stage for entertainment for musicians and another development on that end of town. I'll open it up for questions.
Are there any questions from council? Anybody see any hands on the screen? Okay, there are no questions, so we'll move to debate. Counselor Krosen?
Sorry, mine was a question, might be to city solicitor.
Yep, vote's too fast.
One of the concerns people had was the two different types of uses, the concerts and the drive-in. Is it possible, like, is an amendment to the bylaw possible to limit one or other of those, just theoretically?
Yes.
So if the council wanted, we could limit the use?
Yes, it would be difficult to do on the floor of chambers at this late hour, I would suspect, but it is technically possible.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any further questions before we move to debate? I see no further questions. I think Acting Mayor, Deputy Mayor Campbell has already opened debate. Any further debate? Counselor Higgins?
I guess this is the time that I could put in or try for a amendment. Or I don't know if it's an amendment, because I really can't... Well, I guess I could do amendment, but I'd actually like to ask for, the wording, the, not a postponement, but an, is it a postponement, not an internment?
Det- deter, deferral.
Deferral? Not a deferral, no.
What would you like to do, considering?
Consider this at a later date. It's just, from what I'd heard in there, if I could just say the reason back behind it is that just, we were here for how long and there was, the community engagement was admitted that needed to have more community engagement, so just, I just don't think, I know I'm personally not ready to make a decision on this project, but I guess I would need a second or, if that's the case, to postpone this.
Just so council knows, if there's further engagement, then you'd have to have, re-advertise. You'd have to start again.
No, 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 unless we have it before this council is...
It's a postponement with no further engagement or information coming to the...
We can look for the stuff that we've got right now. Oh, meaning that she...
We would have to have a special meeting in order to do this. If you wanted to postpone it to a special meeting?
Thank you, but the other question is, could the applicant, are they able to engage citizens more during that time, or is...
I believe not, but I'm gonna refer to Solicitor Lowen, just for sure.
So, she could engage more people, but she couldn't give that information to you unless you, you already closed the public hearing. So council can't get more information from the public at this point unless they choose to re-advertise, as the city clerk indicated, and have another public hearing.
Thank you, I appreciate that response, because that's not gonna make it. I won't be postponing that or asking for that amendment, thank you.
Counselor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I understand what Counselor Higgins was trying to do, it would be very difficult, because then it would definitely, I think, be in the hands of next council, and I don't know if I'm ready to do that. However, I'm not prepared, you know what, I really appreciate and I thank the Vandenberg's for coming forward with this project. I think, and I see some good things in what they're proposing to do, but admittedly, from the Vandenberg's, especially the daughter, and I can't remember her name, I'm sorry, but Ms. Vandenberg, it seems to me that there was a lot of, a lot of stuff that just hasn't been done. They didn't have the neighborhood meetings, they never had a chance to talk to the neighbors. She admitted she was out of town for two months. I specifically asked Mr. Vandenberg, who is well aware of the process, as to why he wouldn't have conducted those neighborhood tea parties, or whatever they're called. I'm a little bit concerned that, it seems that there was a lot of stuff going on there, and I was not aware of everything that was being proposed for this particular land. I thought it was just going to be a drive-in movie theater, but from what I heard in the many hours of debate, questions, and answer, is that there's a lot more to this than meets the eye, and I just don't think that, and I'm surprised, because I know Mr. Vandenberg knows the process, and I feel, I feel if I was the resident, that they've been neglected. I think this is being, trying to be rammed through, and I think that what needs to happen is this needs to go back to square one, as much as, as much as I hate to say it, but go back to square one. They need to meet with the residents, with the community, who will be affected, impacted by this decision. I think they also need to get a truer picture and come clean with what exactly they want to do, because I heard so many different things proposed for this project, for this land. So, plus the other fact, the thing that bothers me is the interim. You know, I think it was Counselor Kaufman that asked how long this would be, and when the area structure plan would be, and I think the answer was something like 10 years, so, you know, interim, really, in this case, sounds to me that it could be as long as 10 years. So, I struggle with a lot of this. I feel for the neighborhood, I feel the neighborhood's being neglected, I feel that the neighbors, I specifically asked if the adjacent neighbors, the craft store, the trucking company, and the veterinarian company were contacted, and Mr. Vandenberg's answer to that question was no, they weren't. So, I just feel that they didn't do their due diligence, they didn't, they weren't good neighbors, and as much as I hate to say that, I think you need to do that, that's part of the process. Administration, I know our planning department is big on that, and tells anybody that's coming to make a zoning change to go out and have these tea parties, and that wasn't done, so for that reason, I won't support this rezoning of this particular piece of property.
Thank you. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I tend to agree with statements made by the previous speaker. Well, I appreciate Ms. Vandenberg's business plan, definitely her passion in bringing this forward. We did also hear her say that her intent is to run this through summer operations, so I think this provides or affords the opportunity for her to meet with the community, to understand what the community is expressing in terms of concern, and to learn perhaps some options or some opportunities as to how they can mitigate some of the conflicts that are, I think, are inevitably going to occur. A statement was made about the ambiguity of what exactly was going to occur, we heard some additional comments, it's great to have that sort of vision. However, the zoning request didn't deal with a lot of things that were coming, you know, being spoken about as future deliverables. Additionally, the bylaws, it's written, and this is no fault of anybody's, something that council would need to do, should have measurables, should have deliverables, deliverables, something that the, both the operator, the applicant, and the public can hang their hats on to assure that neighbors are certainly getting along, so I can't support the bylaw at this time.
Thank you. Counselor Miyashiro?
Commissioner Spearman, I'm not sure if the kind of engagement that my colleagues are asking for is necessary in this case. We've never asked for a 200 to 300 to 500 meter buffer for any kind of development approval. And now all of a sudden, we're saying because there's a possibility of a bit of noise, there's a possibility of this or that, that they should have engaged the neighbors. We've had this discussion before about how wide a range is Development Services supposed to talk to. It started at 60 meters, and sometimes it was 100 meters. Never, ever, we asked for 300 to 500 meters, or 400, or whatever it is, I don't remember, for something like this, other than an oil well. So, I'm gonna say that, but I'm not gonna vote in favor of this, because there were some holes in actually what they wanted to do. But I think we need to be really clear on why we're opposing things, and if it's because of lack of engagement, we need to understand if actually they were required to engage that whole community all the way up, up and down 43rd and down 24th Avenue.
You. Counselor Parker?
Thank you very much. Not to repeat too much here, but when we're doing a direct control, it's very important in direct control that you have exactly what is going to happen on that piece of land for a specific purpose. I recall in past applications, direct control giving exact, almost exactly where the building's gonna be, how tall it's going to be, what's exactly going to occur there, so this one is quite vague for being a direct control. So for that reason alone, I think, actually, I like the concept, I like the whole idea. I was kind of hoping maybe possibly just a drive-in versus concerts, because I think there's some control on the sound barrier in regards to listening to it in your vehicle. But for the reasons being that it's vague, a little more could be brought forward in regards of certainty for not only ourselves, but more importantly, the surrounding neighbors, I can't support it at this time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You. Acting Mayor Krosen?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. I was gonna be suggesting an amendment to separate the concert from the drive-in, but listening to my colleagues, I think with some tweaks, and using this as a learning, that with conversations with the community, with a little bit better understanding of what exactly is gonna happen there, a bit more of a business plan, that I think the applicant will get what they're looking for, because there's ways to mitigate some of the concerns that the public brought forward. So rather than me trying to decide what exactly should be on, they're going, well, this use might be better or not, I would agree with my colleagues. Bring this back in a little bit more finished way, and let council decide, so I will not be supporting this.
Thank you. Counselor Higgins?
Mayor Spearman, and I won't say much more than what my colleagues have already said, it's just, again, it's the community engagement, it just looked like there was, you know, more opportunity to engage the community. I love the idea, I simply do, I truly love the idea, and I like to see business development, and I never wanna put the brakes on that, but just how this has come, the interim, I just, I struggle with that as well, and a business plan, because I believe this is, this could work, and so with that, at this time, I cannot support it.
Okay, thank you. I concur with the comments that have been made. I did hear that they had consulted with the veterinary clinic, and I heard that they consulted with the craft store. So, I think the concerns for the neighbors, I was a little surprised, because they were talking about noise right now, due to the highway traffic, but that was separate and apart from any noise that might be generated. I think they did address the theater noise appropriately, that there wouldn't really be any, and so the concern really is, was how loud would the music be, facing, with the music facing the other way? I think that could be mitigated, so I would encourage them to come back and apply again after having addressed those points. With that, Counselor Campbell, call for the vote. Close?
Yeah, I just pretty much concur with what everybody is saying. I think it's a fabulous idea, they had some compelling arguments as to what they wanted to bring forward, and I thought it would be great for the community, great for volunteerism, great to give back to the community, just short on overall figuring out what they're going to do, so, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna support it as well, I will call for the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? There are none, opposed? So that's unanimously opposed on second reading, so we won't proceed to third reading on this. Hopefully administration has clarity on direction from council. Next one, bylaw 6292, land use amendment read childcare definitions, moved by Acting Mayor Krosen for second reading. Be it resolved that bylaw 6292, land use bylaw amendment read childcare definitions be given second reading. Acting Mayor Krosen?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. As everybody heard in the hearing, this is removing the restriction on overnight accommodations, but anyone who is looking at this does have to apply for license, so there's another level that they would have to go through, but this would provide more options to businesses, and I hope my colleagues will support this.
Thank you. Any questions? Debate? Counselor Krosen to close. I think he did.
Call the question.
All in favor? Any opposed? It's unanimous. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6292, land use amendment read childcare definitions be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Acting Mayor Krosen?
Question?
All in favor? Opposed? There are none, thank you. Bylaw 6293, signs and murals, for second reading, by Acting Mayor Krosen. Be it resolved that bylaw 6293, land use bylaw amendment read signs and murals be given second reading?
So this is just a realization that a mural is not a sign, and that there are other ways to ensure that murals are done appropriately, so this would be removing sign, or murals from the sign bylaw, creating a new definition of painted wall signs, and having public art and signs separate.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Any debate?
Yes, Joe.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As much as I love public art, I think it's fantastic, but based on what I heard, I'm a little concerned that I just anticipate members of council getting a lot of phone calls, because someone's gonna do something that someone's gonna be offended by. We know what the world is all about right now, where, you know, you say the wrong word and someone's gonna jump all over you, so now what we're attempting to do is the total opposite, where we are attempting to allow anybody to put up any type of mural, which I'm, personally, I'm okay with, but I think we're going down a slippery slope where we're gonna create more problems than we are, and you know what, I, I'm at the point now where I think we need a little bit more peace in this world, and we need to get along a little bit more, and I believe that this is not the right direction. I still believe that an application should be made to the city, and that should continue as is, so I won't be supporting this, this new bylaw request.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, no further debate. Acting Mayor Krosen to close.
This actually cuts bureaucracy, it reduces the administrative barriers, but with the cost of a mural, I don't think we're gonna be seeing, you know, murals just pop up all over. There are also, this has allied art support, and almost any mural that goes up will probably be working with public art, just for the cost and how it's done, and there's very few good muralists who can do this kind of work, so I believe the controls will be there, and I will ask for my colleagues' support, and they'll call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? And any opposed?
Yes, Joe.
Okay, it carries seven to one. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6293, land use bylaw amendment read signs and murals be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Acting Mayor Krosen?
Question?
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. Okay, next one, bylaw amendment minor errors, moved by Counselor Kaufman. Bylaw 6295 for second reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6295, land use amendment read, minor errors be given second reading. Counselor Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. As we heard, this is just cleaning up some simple mistakes in the bylaw. If there's no debate, call the question.
Any questions? Any debate? Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There's none. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6295, land use bylaw amendment read minor errors be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Kaufman? Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Next, bylaw 6303, lane use bylaw amendment read 3401, 26th Avenue North. And I need a mover for this one. 6303, bylaw 3401, 26th Avenue North.
I can take it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Campbell? Be it resolved that bylaw 6303, land use amendment read 3401, 26th Avenue North be given second reading. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Campbell?
This is to allow the development of a large-scale master planned site consisting of large warehouse-type buildings on a captioned parcel utilizing a design that is unique to Lefford at this time.
Any questions? There are none. Debate? I think Counsel, Deputy Mayor Campbell has opened. Any debate? There is none. Okay. Take your opening as you close. Questions been called, all in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. For third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6303, land use amendment read 3401, 26th Avenue North be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same.
Question?
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There's none, thank you. Next, bylaw 6304, lane use bylaw amendment read 539, 18th Street South. This is the church, who wants to move this? Okay, Counselor Parker? Be it resolved that bylaw 6304, land use amendment read 539, 18th Street South be given second reading. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This just allows the adjacent piece of land next to the church, which is, right now, is zoned as public building, to be designated as low-density residential, which gives it more purpose and allows other people outside of parishioners to use as residence, so I'd ask for council's support.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any debate?
Question?
Counselor Parker calls the question, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none. And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6304, land use amendment read 539, 18th Street South be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and same, sign and seal the same. Counselor Parker? Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none, thank you. Now we're going to go to bylaw 6305, bylaw amendment read 520, 16th Street South. Is that 18th, it's supposed to be 18th Street South? It's 18th, right? Yeah, okay. Okay, I believe, got the one, this is the one that I just did get some advice on this one, so I could, I'm gonna remove myself on this one. I'm gonna remove myself. When in doubt, get out on these things, so I'm just going to, Mr. Mayor. Okay?
I can take this bylaw if no one else wants it.
Okay. Counselor Miyashiro wants to get his name in the minutes, so... Okay, moved by Counselor Miyashiro, bylaw 6305, be it resolved that bylaw 6305, land use amendment read 520, 18th Street South be given second reading? Counselor Miyashiro?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. As we heard earlier, the Green Acres Foundation wants to renovate what was formerly a com, formerly a daycare, formerly apartments, back into affordable and market value seniors housing. They will have appropriate parking, they've got it all scoped out, and I think this would really add to our, definitely our housing inventory in the city for seniors.
Any questions from council? Any debate? Would you like to close?
Question?
Question's been called, all in favor? And for third reading, be it resolved that bylaw 6305, land use amendment read 520, 18th Street South be given third reading, and the mayor and the city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same. Counselor Miyashiro?
Question?
Question's been called, all in favor? Any opposed? There are none, thank you. We can invite Counselor Parker back. Okay, next is bylaw 6321, amendment to the sharing business and industrial area structure plan, sharing area structure plan. I need a mover. Counselor Higgins? Be it resolved that bylaw 6321, amendment to sharing business and industrial area structure plan be amended. Counselor Higgins?
Thank you, Mayor Spearman. We'd heard this just a little earlier today, it was the destruction of a vet clinic as well as, as a dental clinic, and I think anytime we get business in that area, and we'd also heard... anytime we get business in that area, and we'd also heard, um, the applicant, as well as others, speak to the importance of having this in that area. And I think it's a, a great opportunity, and I do support this, and I'll ask for council's support.
Okay. Any questions from council? Debate? I think we've opened. Councilor Higgins? Yeah. Any debate from members of council? I see none?
Question?
Question's been called. All in favor? Okay, any opposed? I think we'll do a roll call.
Councilor Parker?
In favor?
Acting Mayor Croson? You're on mute if you're talking, Councilor Croson.
Opposed.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
In favor.
Mayor Spearman?
Opposed.
Councilor Kaufman?
Opposed.
Councilor Higgins?
In favor.
Councilor Morrow?
Favor.
And Councilor Miyashiro?
Opposed.
Four-four tie. That's lost.
Okay, hold the third reading. That's it? And? Okay, so then we'll move on to inquiries. There's just the one inquiry. I submitted one, but, uh, it was handled by the city manager. In the weekly updates, Councilor Kauf, uh, Kaufman submitted an inquiry, re-police procurement. Are we expecting an answer today?
The answer's actually in, included in there.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the answer's been provided. Any concerns, questions? Okay, none? Okay, thank you. Council updates? Are there any council updates? I will give one that I thought was very informative. I attended last Thursday a meeting, uh, with the Lethbridge Police Service. Uh, it was called a comstat meeting, uh, where basically, community agencies and the police get together and talk about, uh, issues in the city of Lethbridge and how they're being addressed. And I'd just briefly say I found that meeting very informative. It sort of, uh, they talked about, uh, crime in different areas of the city and what their strategies were in addressing those crimes. And, uh, I won't divulge any of that, but basically how they track it, how they report it, and how they respond, uh, to, uh, issues that police are involved in in the city of Lethbridge, and that, that, how they, uh, assess the zones. And I thought, uh, it was a really informative meeting. And if members of council have an opportunity to attend those meetings going forward into the future, it's just another way to be better connected to our police and the agencies that they work with. So, uh, the next council, uh, might look out for comstat meetings and maybe seek invitations from, uh, the police chief. Thank you. If there's no further updates, we'll move on to the final resolutions. Okay. I have a resolution moved by Councilor Morrow. Opportunity land, opportunity Lethbridge Land Banking Strategy. Be it resolved that council directed the closed meeting reports, presentations, discussions, and documents with respect to requests for extension remain confidential pursuant to sections 23, Local Public Body Confidences, and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further, that city council direct, that the city manager proceed with the confidential direction provided in the closed meeting. Councilor Morrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question first.
Okay.
Does this mean that what was discussed, uh, by us approving this resolution, means we approve of what was discussed?
No. What, uh, what the city manager had said was that we, for the most part, accepted the direction, and they would be taken forward for discussion with the next city council.
Thank you for that. I'll call for the question. Unless there's questions or debate.
Okay. Any further questions? Any debate? Question has been called. All in favor? Are any opposed? There are none. Thank you. Next, I have the omnibus resolution, uh, moved by Deputy Mayor Campbell. 10.2, 10.3, and 10.4. Be it resolved that council direct that the closed meeting discussions with respect to COVID-19 update verbal, an external board update remain confidential pursuant to section 16, harmful to business interests of a third party, 23 Local Public Body Confidences, and 24 Advice from Officials of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. And further, be it resolved that council refer 10.4 Human Resources Matter to the Economic Standing Policy Committee of September the 15th, 2021. Deputy Mayor Campbell?
Question?
Okay. Any questions? Any debate? Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Yes, Joe.
Okay.
Oh, Joe opposes.
Okay, not unanimous. It's, uh, seven to one. Okay, um, last resolution moved by Councilor Parker at 9:23. Adjournment. Be it resolved that we do now adjourn the regular meeting of city council. Councilor Parker? Question's been called. All in favor? Any opposed? There are none. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Good night, all.
Good night. Thank you.